Okay, do you see Lieutenant Schultz on, Tony?
Um, I don't.
Well, let me, let me open the meeting. It's about six, no past six. I have a motion to open the meeting.
Seconded.
This is Wednesday, July 22nd. Board of Selectments meeting, six o'clock. I think we need a motion for it, but. Let's get right into it. First on the, on the agenda is the coronavirus update with health nurse Deb Murphy and Health Officer John Kulan. Deb, you want to take the spot?
So, um, this week has been a little bit of an uptake. We haven't had positive cases since June 12th. And this week already, we have four new cases. With a lot of contact tracing as well. So, and the interesting thing is now that, and I talked to a couple of other public health nurses today from surrounding communities. The age group now of the residents that are starting to test positive is much younger. So, none of our new cases have anything to do with the nursing home or people that are actually in the high-risk group, in the elderly group. The other thing that I think is interesting, if you follow the weekly data that DPH puts out. They've changed it now to every two weeks and not every Wednesday. But as of last Wednesday, July 15th, we had, in Nahat, had had 557 residents who have been tested. So that was up 173 from two weeks ago. So I think that shows that people are, you know, being tested now, the guidelines for being tested. Pretty much anybody that wants a test can find a testing site.
Hey Deb, it's Gene. Can you tell me, what is the age range this week?
So, interestingly enough, we've had two, two out of the four cases are 13 and under. And the other two are, you know, parents. But, so, I think, you know, I think, and when I talk to the other nurses in the other communities too. We seem to often, people are starting to feel a little more relaxed. And, you know, the masks and the social distancing, especially in the, that younger population. You know, when I see them walking even around town in the groups, I hardly see any, any of them wearing masks. And, you know, they're all huddled together. So, I think, you know, we can't, we can't disregard the information that we know is our best defense, which is the mask, the hand washing, even the social distancing.
Especially with the beaches and hot weather, people together, so.
Yeah. And you know what, interestingly enough too, these cases we're seeing happening outside. Where before you probably thought that gee, most of these are inside. But, you know, we've had cases in, in some of our outside venues. Not necessarily people that live here, but their contacts do live here. John, I see you're, you just logged on. I don't know if you can hear us yet.
You muted, John, yeah?
Go ahead, yeah. I was just logging on. You looking for me to report on?
Deb just gave an update about our new cases in town and how, um, some of them are younger children. Deb, I don't know, do you want to expand a little bit on that Deb, before we jump over to John? About like, how that, what about like outside of Nahat? Cause I, I've been seeing the same, I've seen a lot through emails and communication with other municipalities and just on the news that it's not just here, it's kind of throughout the state.
Right. All of the numbers have gone up this week, of all of the towns. So, you know, some of, some of the venues are, you know, camps have opened, sports have opened. So we, we saw in Phase Three, a lot of reopenings and a lot more allowances, I guess, for people to, you know, socialize outside. We've had, you know, cases on the golf course. We've had cases at private, you know, outdoor lessons. So, it's just, it's just, right now it feels like, gee, you know, we, we did well and everybody did well for, you know, probably could be three and a half weeks there in the middle of June until now, but almost four weeks. And I just think, I just think it's a good time just to remind people, and especially that younger generation, those, the teenage group. I know they think that, you know, it's summer and that nothing's gonna, you know, nothing's gonna happen to them. And ironically, that age group, their symptoms, luckily for them, they're not getting that sick with the symptoms as their parents have. The, the older people are getting, you know, it doesn't, they're really feeling pretty crap.
Did you say this was a parent-child thing?
Well, in the households, if you have a positive case, it's, you know, it's really difficult for people that live in your house. Although, we've seen the whole family get tested and we'll see maybe out of four people, two will test positive and two will test negative. In that case, and in any case in a household, the people, even the people in the house who test negative have to quarantine for two weeks. And I've seen people who tested negative at the beginning, who, you know, during that two weeks have developed symptoms and have gone on to be retested and have converted to positive. So that's why the two-week quarantine is really in effect, again, even if you test negative. And I think that's a hard message to get out there to people because what I'm seeing is, and, you know, not just us, but we're seeing contacts who have tested negative. And as soon as they get that test result, they think, I'm good to go now, you know, I don't have it.
What was the, what was the order here? Was it the parent giving it to the child or the child to the parent?
In these two cases, yes. In these two cases, I think, when we, you know, when we try to do the contact tracing and get all the information gathered. I was, I think that in these cases, the parent had it first. I don't think the child caught it from an outside group.
John, you have everything to add?
Thank you. I would like for folks to think about situations similar to this that go on for a period of time. It is normal to enter a stage known as crisis fatigue. Getting tired of being in crisis all the time. And the unfortunate result is that people tend to then automatically relax on the cautions that had been taken. And unfortunately, that inevitably, inevitably results in a second wave that turns out more, more devastating to the public's health and the economic health than the first wave. That is what occurred during the global pandemic influenza of 1918, 1919. We can avoid that now, but only with continued awareness. And in fact, the, the governors' groups that named the different phases, named Phase Three as vigilance. The reason they did so is that without vigilance, we end up even worse than we were at the, at the height of this first, first wave. Just want to put that out there for people to think about, because it's very easy to relax on what we've been doing. And I think what we've been doing has been fantastic, as reflected by the statewide data. In fact, in, in the, in the Northeast, we, we're doing very well, as you can see from the national maps, when we compare northeastern states to the rest of the country. I've seen that, as I, as I see groups playing games at the ball field or gathering, still paying attention to face coverings, which is going to be very important. And the distancing, of course. I, I'm glad when I find out that people are still thinking about this. And I'm just imploring folks to take our role individually and with each other as seriously as we have been since, since March. That's all I have for now.
Thanks, John. Thanks Deb. Again, thanks for your great work. And we'll be back in a couple of weeks for another update. Thank you again. We'll move on to opening comments. A few I have to read. Let's see, available seat on the Board of Assessors and Planning Board. Application for due July 20th. And we will take a vote, these votes will be a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors and the Planning Board to appoint for an interim period till next election, a candidate. So we have a couple people who expressed interest. Appreciative of their, sending their resumes in and I look forward to discussing this with the other boards next week or two weeks from now. Secondly, the firefight department is seeking applications for the position of call firefighters. This is, uh, this is a very rewarding opportunity for people. There are some requirements. You have to live within one mile of Nahat, so that'd be actually one mile of the Rotary of Nahat. Yep. Must be 18 years of work age, physically fit. You have to complete a initial firefighter training course and attend monthly training and commit to 10 to 20 hours per month. So, I know there's a lot of young people, we put a class through a couple of months ago, they had all, I think we swore them, Tony, they had a great experience. And I, I encourage anybody to, who's interested to, to either, if you're interested to contact Chief Palumbo or Lieutenant Doyle.
Who are very, who are very good individuals that I, I don't think really knew each other before going into the academy together and now they're very close friends.
Yeah, they are. Great. So I hope to see some more applicants. Opening comments, because I don't see, we don't have it on the agenda, there were a couple items that I wanted to bring up for discussion among the other members of the board. I mean, you, Tony, and they have to do with this hot weather and I think everybody experienced quite a, quite a time over the weekend with the crowds and the, the causeway getting shut down a few times. And there were two, there were two issues that I think we could discuss, maybe you could bring us up to speed, Tony. One is the causeway and what happens on days like this when it's 100 degrees and the parking lot gets filled by at 7:30 in the morning and people are still trying to come in. And the second one, if we could talk a little bit about is, I noticed that there's a lot of boats, particularly up in 40 steps area and, and Short Beach, rafting together and up in 40 steps in particular, there were close to 20 boats rafted together, very loud, very noisy. I know that some communities have restrictions of that based on COVID-19. I was told by, I think Gene, you told me that Marblehead limits the number of boats that can raft to two or three. But, Tony, let's start with the causeway then, maybe we can talk a little bit about the boat situation.
Yes, and Lieutenant Schultz is on the, is on the phone now too. I think first, it's, um, one thing we have to understand is that this past weekend, the entire state experienced this scenario. Not even just the coastal communities or communities that have state reservations in them, but a lot of inland water bodies, ponds, lakes in Western Mass and Central Mass, you know, experienced a lot of the same thing. And a lot of it has to do with COVID reasons where there's, there isn't any summer camps, there aren't, or there aren't many summer camps or many kids aren't going to summer camps. Summer sports, summer school, folks aren't going on vacation. So there's just a lot more people here. And I think that's a, a pretty big contributing factor to why we saw so many people coming to the beach and why we saw such a big traffic backup. But that piles on top of existing issues. Which includes, you know, the reconstruction of the causeway, parking lot area and reduction of spaces. The entry point of the, of the booth where folks are coming in is, is tight as it is, but it also is now reduced down to one lane. They're only, they're only taking cards or pre-purchased tickets, season passes. And there's, you know, so, and then typically, you know, we're probably a handful more times a year, time of the summer, we experience issues like that. Where on the really hot weekends, you have a lot of people in the surrounding communities and further, sometimes traveling up to an hour, from an hour away to the state beach on the causeway. So, um, there's a lot of contributing factors to that. And I think we also had an incident actually on the, on the inbound side of the causeway this past weekend that stopped traffic completely for about 20 minutes. Which, you know, long-lasting traffic implications. So, um, I know there's, there's infrastructure upgrades that need to happen, which would take time. And then there's staffing issues and policy changes that we could explore with state police and DCR as well. But some of it is also just kind of understanding that we're kind of living in a, in an extraordinary time, on top of it being the, you know, the, the most active part of the year. Lieutenant Schultz, are you unmuted?
I believe I am, Tony. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, the mic is yours.
I can only reiterate what you've always, already said, Tony. We're experiencing an unprecedented number of people that are seeking to come to the beach based on the, the factors you already listed. In addition to what you've already said, again, is there are limitations that are being brought on by COVID with the fact that they can only take credit card payments, they're down to one lane. So that's limiting, that's cut in half their ability to, to take cars into the, the Long Beach lot. You know, and, and as you said, kids aren't doing their normal summer routines, whether it's sports camps or sports activities. Parents are trying to, to find ways to keep their children occupied and spend some time with them. And as much as, as much as I've seen some, some commentary that Nahat's not a resort community, it is a, a destination that people like to come to, whether it's to go to the beach or enjoy the scenery. So, I, I can say from our perspective, we're, we're doing everything we can to deal with not only the traffic situation on the causeway, but also the traffic situation in town and, and the parking-related situation that comes as a result of people not being able to get parking along Long Beach. It is concurrent jurisdiction, I know that has been a question that's been brought up. I know Chief Dwyer is going to try and reach out to the state police to make sure that there is adequate patrols available on their part to help us out on Long Beach, should anything happen down there and we need to investigate it or, or respond to it. And that's pretty much where we're at in terms of trying to deal with it at this point.
I would say also you have, or from conversations with, with the chief too, is, you know, where you have people coming from so far, coming to Nahat or to go to the state beach. Sometimes, you know, they're waking up early, they're packing their car up with their kids, with their family, with their cooler, with their beach stuff. And they drive here for a half an hour, sit in the line for a half an hour and they get turned around. They don't, they tend not to give up so easily. So, you know, many times the police officers are seeing the same people, you know, they, they turn out of town, they go around the Rotary, they come back in and try and get into the lot on the outbound side. And then they can't do that, so then they come back in again and try to find a place in town to park. So, you know, there's, it's, there isn't a simple solution, it's a, it's a complex issue. You know, once, once people get into town and start trying to find a place to park, there's a whole nother element that comes into play with the police. Whether it be, you know, is it, is it a posted area for no parking? Is it a resident that doesn't have a sticker or is it a non-resident, is it a guest of a resident? You know, many people that live in Nahat have guests that don't have stickers that park in front of their home. So there's, there's a ton of different elements. And meanwhile, you know, our police officers are stretched pretty thin responding to medical calls or other types of issues that come in or going to the Wharf and, you know, clearing that area out or up by 40 steps or East Point or the causeway, you know, there's just, on a hot day, ultimately, we are just, we're extremely stressed, our peoples are extremely stressed. So, there are things that we're exploring, we are having conversation, I don't want to sound like there's nothing we can do and we just got to deal with it. There are definitely things we've already been doing that makes it, believe it or not, it could be much worse if we weren't doing some of the stuff that we're already doing. And we're also in conversations with the DCR as well to do even more. But, you know, one of the biggest issues with, with the parking lot is the lack of spacing and the entry point to it. So, and that's an infrastructure change, which, you know, would take a lot of time and dollars on the state's behalf to do that work. So, we're kind of caught in between a rock and a hard place at times with some of that issue.
You know, Tony, Tony, one of the problems that I picked up on was the fact that there's very little communication and coordination inside that park with the people that are running it. Because if you were to go down the end of the causeway with 50, 60 cars trying to go into the inbound lane, as you're going out of town, you can see 50 or 60 spots. And, and that's something I think that somebody ought to communicate to them, that they've got a police staff better, not the police, but those that are inside that park.
I think they, you know, what I think they do is they, they wait until a certain amount of spots are open or a certain amount of time has gone by. Because they're trying, it's actually a policy in place that they do across the state to prevent people from tolling up and waiting. So, in other words, the lot's closed, it's not going to be open immediately, it may not open for three hours, it may not open for longer, you know, try and find somewhere else to go. Because if they say, okay, once 10 spots open up, we'll, we'll open the gate again, you'll just have that, people will just sit in that line over and over. So.
It just puts a greater burden on the three police officers that were doing, by the way, a fantastic job of handling what they had in front of them.
Yeah. It does, it absolutely does.
I, I can speak to the, the open spaces down there. Their policy in the past years has been, and I don't have a specific number, is, is the number policy. And that's, that's actually to try and deal with a public safety aspect in terms of if they open it, if they get 10 spots open and they open it for 10 spots now, we're, we're opening, closing, opening, closing, whereas if they wait for, and again, I don't have the specific number they wait for, it's a little bit, it alleviates the pressure and causes a little less of a backup in the, in the lot. And that's one of our concerns that we try to deal with down there is, is preventing a backup within the lot. Because once that happens, getting emergency services down through that lot to whatever call for service we may get out there is, is, is a burden. We have to, we have to adapt and overcome, whether it's stop halfway down the causeway and access one of the emergency access gates in the fence or enter from the other way. But that's part of the reason that they wait and allow people, allow so many spots to open up prior to opening the, the lot back up.
Thank you. Josh, any, any comments?
I could comment on the, on the boat situation if we're done with the traffic.
Sure, go ahead.
I don't have comments on the traffic.
You have the mic.
Okay, so on the boat situation, you introduced this a little bit, Mark, but, you know, we're having situations where, you know, close to 20 boats rafted up in 40 steps. And so, we've had some conversations with the harbor master about what's appropriate. He needs, he needs, let's say, a rule to follow in order to enforce that. So, over the next few days, we'll come up with some guidelines. He's, I know he's benchmarking against what other towns are doing in terms of limits of numbers of boats rafting up. This is not an attempt to prevent people from enjoying their boats and enjoying our beaches and coves. But we want to arm him with some guidelines about limits on numbers of boats that can raft up and numbers of total boats allowed in a confined cove like, like 40 steps. In addition, of course, courteous behavior is expected in terms of loud music and profanity, which I hear was an issue last weekend that was not in town. But there were complaints from residents and that's really not fair to other people that are trying to enjoy the beach as well. So, we'll have some guidelines for the harbor master to enforce in the, in the coming few days. And looking forward to peaceful beaches and boaters being able to enjoy the spaces in a safe way.
I know Lieutenant, you were up there over the weekend, so I think you observed what was going on.
Yeah, I got, I was the responding officer to the noise disturbance up there. And it, it wasn't, it wasn't limited to just residents trying to enjoy their own residence. It was, it was people trying to enjoy the beach that were commenting that the boats were like a circus out there. And, and again, like you said, we're not trying, and like Josh said, we're not trying to prevent anybody from enjoying their boats and their leisure time on their boats. But there's a line that I believe was crossed, you know, the, the noise could clearly be heard down the hot road a piece. And, you know, I think we're in a position now where we have to address it and, and try and mediate a happy resolution to everybody, both the boaters trying to enjoy our, our beaches and coves and, and the residents.
You know what I found interesting? The environmental police were, were cruising that area, both there, up at their 40s and also at the Short Beach. And they, I saw them pulling up next to the boats, probably talking to them, maybe breaking them up or whatever they were doing, but they were doing a nice job.
Okay, all right, so we'll follow up on that, we'll work with you, Tony, and maybe developing a policy that the board could vote on at our next meeting and get some input from you and the harbor master and what that policy could look like.
I'll also work with Dan and John Kulan. I think under the COVID public health emergency, we may have a little bit of a larger reach. we may have a little bit of a larger reach, you know, under the temporary emergency scenario, some type of rules and regs that we can, that we can put in place. And then, you know, what can we do beyond that, too? So, I'll work with Dan on that, too.
Great. And before we leave this part of agenda, Lieutenant, I do think that, you know, I witnessed all weekend the police doing their job. They, difficulty situation. I applaud their efforts. You know, they, they, they've been through this before. And I know that you guys are all doing the best you can in tough situations. So, I appreciate your efforts.
Well, we're happy to help. And we're doing, like you said, we're doing the best we can, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, a couple of comments in the chat that I'll just take real quick before we move on. The first was Jen McCarthy asking, is the town reaching out to DCR and asking for more police presence on the causeway? And yep, we're, we're in communications with the, with state police. I think we talked a little bit about that just after you asked, Jen. Christine Licio also asked, can we make sure the lifesaving station lot is locked? I can reach out to Emily Potts over there and see if they're locking it regularly. I think, I know that it's typically closed, but I can, I can make a call over to there. And Michelle Capano is asking, would the BOS consider raising the penalty slash violation for non-resident parking tickets? We are looking into that. Actually, I don't know if I've actually brought that to the attention of the Board of Selectmen quite yet. Dan and Chief Dwyer have been looking into it. Because, quite frankly, I think that the out-of-state parking fee for DCR is $40. And I think our, you know, one of our penalties is only 35 and the other's 45. So, in some scenarios, it, it almost makes more sense if you have an out-of-state plate to take the ticket. So, we are looking into it. And we hope to put some type of proposal in front of the Board of Selectmen on that as well. Colleen Hester O'Neil, can we put barriers between the two lanes so residents can get down the causeway to their homes? This may actually help the police as well. It's, I think that's come up in the past. We've talked to DCR about it. But we can bring it back up again. I forget, I forget, that was, I think, a couple of years ago that idea surfaced. And they may have tried it, and I don't, I don't remember how well it worked or not. It was before I was here. But Colleen, we can, we'll bring that up with DCR. All right, that's, that's it for, for the, for those comments.
Tony, one more, if I could. I've been asked, who has what level of responsibility on the causeway? On the parking lot?
Well, we have, the Nahat Police has the details, and we respond to many of the calls. It is a state-owned or state-run reservation. So, the state police have jurisdiction there as well. But typically, we're the first on scene when 911 calls come in. And I know that Nahat Police responded to quite a few over the weekend. And it's always a challenge getting into that lot because of the way it's set up. So, DCR runs the causeway, and the state police and Nahat Police both have jurisdiction on criminal issues or detail issues.
And just wanted to add, Tony, that although the Nahat Police have the details, Nahat does not pay for those details, right?
Correct. The state pays for those.
Right.
Great. Good questions. Okay, we're going to move on to new business here. Section three of our agenda. Assigned temporary chairman for the month of August. I'm going to be away for the most, most of the modificationing. I'm certainly going to try to join every meeting. I think most of our, if not all of our meetings will be through Zoom. But per advice of Town Council, suggested, I think you're correct, Dan, that maybe we should have another member stuff up as acting chair while I'm gone. So...
Okay, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen vote to assign Joshua Antrim as the acting chairman. Well, the current chairman, Mark Cullen, is on vacation.
I will second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Josh Antrim, aye.
Jean Cathy, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Under 3B, there's some minutes to approve. I think, Jean, you're not participating in this because you weren't a member of the board at the time.
Correct.
I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes from March 17th, 2020.
Seconded. Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Josh Antrim, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes from April 24th, 2020.
Seconded. Motion's made and seconded. Roll call vote?
Josh Antrim, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Okay, under 3C, we have an event request by the Nahat Little League. Jean, can you have a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Nahat Little League season.
Seconded.
Been seconded. Any discussion? Any update on this, Tony?
I'll, I'll just say that the, the Little League put together a COVID guideline-type plan and submitted that to John Coulon and has been approved. So, there are, there are certain, it's not this, your standard Little League scenario. There are certain guidelines being adhered to and, and, and new ways of doing things there, so.
Tony, can I ask a question about that? So, John, is it stated that the spectators shouldn't have masks on?
Here we go. All right, thanks. The state has that spectators should have masks if they're going to be within six feet of individuals outside of their household for a period of 15 minutes. But casual contact, what was that?
Oh, I just want to bring up at the Little League games, because I have been to a couple here in Nahat, that, that Nahat parents were all sitting together on the bleachers with no masks on. But the opposing teams are all bringing their own chairs, sitting apart with masks on. And I'm pretty sure I heard in one of our DPH meetings that the spectators for any of these sports should be...
It is recommended. You don't know which way the wind is, is blowing at a particular time, and conditions are such that it warrants caution, certainly. So, recommendation is there. However, the mandates are, it can be not as, as strict as what the guidelines may, may allow. So, it's a, it's a difficult thing to, to mandate. But let's, let's repeat that the guidelines are very clear, that yes, you are recommended to wear masks at outdoor events, and particularly when people are in close proximity. But most certainly, when you are within six feet for 15 minutes.
Tony, maybe you could ask the president of the Little League to send out a notice to all the parents, you know, strongly encouraging them to wear masks when they come. I think it sets a good example, especially with kids around. And we have friends from other communities visiting. We should set the example. And hopefully, the president could, could encourage all of the participants in the Little League to do that.
Yeah, I can work, I'll work with John and Deb on that one.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get something out as soon as possible.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Josh Antrim, aye.
Jean Cathy, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Next on the agenda is Six Antigo Way easement discussion. Do you want to start this? Tony?
Yep. And Mr. Caddily's on the phone, too. I just unmuted him. So, this is a request for, well, I'll let, I'll, do you mind if Frank goes first, or?
That'd be fine.
All right, the floor is yours.
Hi, gentlemen. Basically, my, as I gave you folks a letter that in 1946, all three of our houses here on Antigo Way, my, my family bought. And in 1980, we bought it from our family trust. So, we've been here since 1980. Around 1980, we applied for a permit and was granted a permit after a non-conforming variance to put an addition on. And they referred to a plot plan from 1946, showing plenty of frontage to the property and not an issue. We proceeded with the improvements. The house has not been improved since 1980. Antigo Way has not changed direction. It's, it's been the same location that it's been since I was a child in 1946. So, since that time has happened over the years, my wife and I have noticed that we've caught different, different maps of Nahat showing Antigo Way to the left, to the right, to the center, and became concerned. So, we hired Ralph Reed to do a, a, a new plot plan, which is dated, which you folks have, which is dated June, July 2nd, showing that there's about 192 square feet that's encroaching Antigo Way. And it was quite a surprise to all of us. Because as they say, the house has not moved on the original footprint, and the street has not moved. But the actual street, even though it's not paved there, it shows that a corner of our house is actually on the street. It does not have any, I've had Dan come down and take a look at it. It does not encroach or does not impact any of our butters, and it does not impact the town at all. And we're the last house on a dead-end street. So, basically, what we're asking for is if we could acquire that piece of land to, through easement.
We're talking about 192 square feet?
Right. You should have, I gave you folks a copy. You should have a copy of the new plot plan, which shows the exact area. Did you receive that in an email?
Yes, I did, Frank. Thank you. It was very helpful.
And as you say, if, and I also sent out a copy of the assessor's paving map, which is the actual physical location of where my house is and where Antigo Way is, which again, shows that, you know, the house is off the pavement, but technically not off the mapped-out street.
Okay, great. Thank you, Frank. Dan, I've got a question. You've been down there, you looked at it.
Yep.
Perhaps address what the process would be for the town to help facilitate this?
Yes. The town meeting is required in two instances. One, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, to dispose, what's called dispose of public property. And that is got to be authorized by a two-thirds vote of town meeting. But because this is also a public way, we also need town meeting vote to discontinue the public way, or that portion of it. I'm sorry, just that 192 feet portion of it. And that has to go to town meeting first, or at some point it's go to town meeting. And then, we would have to then give it to the town-owned land study committee, who then provides a recommendation, just like they did over on Bayview. And then it's up to the selectmen to decide whether they want to go forward and actually sell this property pursuant to the procurement procedures. So, this is a, this is a lengthy process. It's nothing that can be done quickly. It's certainly nothing that could happen tonight. But we can get the ball rolling.
Josh, Jean, do you have any comments on this?
Not really. I was booked, Mr. Caddily, after reviewing all the documentation he provided. I guess the only new question I have is if that easement is provided, is there some minimum width for the, what remains of the road? I don't, I don't know that we need to answer it right now, but that's just a question that...
Dan, do you know the answer to that? I mean, the, the question is, yes, Josh, I think that that's something that we're going to have to look at, and that's something that the town land study committee looked at with Beth Kelly's...
Yeah.
Thing. So, we'll have, we'll have to be sure that, you know, there's, it's passable.
Yeah. In terms of width, Josh, it's all about Chief Dwyer and Chief Palumbo, making sure that their, their, their race can get to and from the area.
So, I guess that could be included in the town-owned land study.
Absolutely. Most certainly. Absolutely.
Given that this needs to go through town meeting either way, I would be in favor of opening up the warrant and adding the required articles. Otherwise, it's a whole nother year and a half before Mr. Caddily can get an answer.
I would support that, Josh. Perhaps, Dan, could you draft an article that we could consider?
I sure can. Tony was on top of this. We talked about this today, and we were going to have that ready for you guys by the next meeting.
Okay, great.
August 3rd.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll push it along, Frank, and hopefully we can get it through. It does, it seems like a fairly innocuous type of request. It's 192 square feet and doesn't seem to affect anything or anybody. So, hopefully, the town will see it that way, and we can get this straightened out.
Thank you for your time, guys. I appreciate it.
One thing I would like to add, you know, I, my only really, my only concern about this is, is the appearance of a precedent. Because we're, you know, we're hoping to get all these town right-of-ways opened back up and identified. And it's, it's been an uphill battle, quite frankly. And this obviously is not the same thing. But I think we have a situation in Little Nahat where there's been some encroachment on town property during construction. And I just want us to be very careful about people doing things and then asking forgiveness afterwards. I know this is absolutely not that situation, but I just don't want it to be viewed in that same light.
Good point, Josh. I agree 100%.
Yeah, Josh, that's one of the things the town-owned land study committee really takes to heart. So, you can bet it'll be deliberated in that venue.
Thanks. That's all I had to say.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dan. Look forward to seeing that article. Okay, item 3E, Bayside Function Room Outside Dining Premises Expansion Approval.
Okay, so, we have a request. This is similar to requests that we've seen in the past from other businesses in town, like Tides, the golf course, Country Club, Knights of Columbus, where they're looking to utilize, looking to utilize the temporary authority through the public health emergency to expand their current common vic license and their current liquor license premises outside area. And Bayside is submitting, they filled out an application for both, and are looking to expand temporarily their premises to the outside, outside area. And you have some, you have a diagram in front, in your packets, the selectmen. I believe there's someone on the phone, or someone... I believe there's someone on the phone or someone from Bayside should be in the call. But I don't know. If anyone on the call is representing Bayside and you're on Zoom, if you could write in the chat. Let me see. Let me see if I can set this up so they're able to unmute themselves. All right, so if anybody on the phone is calling, representing, anybody on Zoom is representing Bayside, if you could unmute yourself and maybe briefly.
Hello, this is John from the Bayside. Can you hear me now?
Thank you, John. Yes. So if you could briefly explain the request.
Sure. The request is, we have just a few parties left that would like to host small gatherings, more than 25 guests, that we're only allowed to do inside currently. We're thinking 52, 75 guests would allow us to finish about seven jobs that are still holding out hope that we can have private functions maybe on the outdoor space. So that's why we're looking for the temporary permission to do so.
Area that you're looking to have that, those events?
Well, outside area on the parking lot, parking paver area, along the seawall space. And we would do it in a way that's still social distancing with the number of people at a table being six and then the tables six feet apart. And obviously, it would be open air, which would be the safest way to still be able to do a function.
Thank you, John. I did have an opportunity to take a ride down there before the meeting and I've noticed the improvements on the landscape. A couple of things. One is you are aware that there's a wastewater pumping station there?
Yes.
You can maintain access to. I didn't see any new construction over that pumping station. So it looked like it's okay, but if cars are parking there overnight, there could be a problem. So we got to make sure that there's no parking on that substation and that it's accessible at all times. And Dan, maybe you could talk a little bit. This is Southwick Road, I believe. I had a conversation with Tony about this. There's a paper street. Maybe you can talk a little bit about the legal status of that way?
Yeah, paper streets, they're, as a whole, they're an anomaly. They sort of exist, but they don't exist. They exist on paper. What I need to see, and it would be helpful if Mr. Byrne can provide a copy of Bayside's deed to see what it states regarding Southwick Avenue. I did look online in the South Essex Registry, but I just couldn't find it. So maybe Mr. Byrne can put that out there. But that being said, it doesn't stop anything that you guys can do tonight regarding the expanding the premises temporarily regarding the common vic and the liquor. So that has no bearing on your vote tonight. In the future, though, however, if there is going to be some blockages there, we might need to address it at that point. But we really need to sort of drill down to the Southwick Avenue paper street issue. Just to make clear, this is not the same as the right-of-ways that Josh was talking about earlier. This is a different animal. And we've got to dig a bit deeper. But long story short, this should not stop you guys from making whatever vote you.
I don't see a motion in my packet here. Do we have a motion?
Dan has some. I just sent them to your email. There are also some questions from residents in the chakravatsi.
Yeah, why don't we do this, Tony? Why don't we make the motion? Then I'll open it up for discussion because I'm sure the other members in the public may have something to say.
All right, Dan, could you read the motion off to the chairman?
I can. And there are actually two motions. One is for the common vic, which is a common victor, which is basically a restaurant. And another motion is for the liquor license. So there are two different ones. The first motion, and after I read the motion, Mark, you can just say "as read" and then start your deliberations. You don't have to state the motion yourself. So the motion is this. The motion is this. I move that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Section 4 of Governor Baker's Executive Order Number 35 approve the application submitted by the Bayside Function Room to temporarily expand their licensed premises as approved in their original liquor license application. That's the first motion. So you can go through the, say "as read" and then go through the process.
Okay, the motion is "as read." Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Then seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Please define temporary.
Until November 1st, or if the order is extended by the governor. So this is not a permanent fix, or I'm sorry, permanent change. Now, if Mr. Byrne or Bayside wanted a permanent change, then they would have to go through the ABCC and go through that whole process, which is a lot longer than the vote tonight.
And we can be assured we'll have accessibility to fire and police to that access road easement?
Yeah, my understanding is that that doesn't interfere with that at all.
Okay. That's a tough road to begin with, so they definitely need to have that opening.
When you talk about having the opening, are you talking about the Southwick Ave 20 feet down to the entrances of the Bayside, or are you?
No, I'm talking going down Southwick and then going northeast.
Onto Range Road?
Onto Range Road.
Well, we're not blocking that access.
Okay, good.
Tony, any other comments from the residents?
Yeah, John, maybe you can answer some of these. So will there be outside music? Where will the cars park if the tables are in the lot? And will parties shut down at a certain time?
So the cars will still be able to park in the parking lot as usual. The only difference will be is we'll take the small area along the seawall to add tables. Like I said, most of these parties are going to be between 50 and 60 people and they will be in that area only, so there'll still be enough parking spaces provided. None of these events are weddings, so music would be to a minimum. They might want some dinner music played, but not anything like live bands. And what was the third question?
Will parties shut down at a certain time and is there any extra lighting involved?
There's no extra lighting involved. As far as shutting down, I mean, my regular business hours, I suppose. But these parties that are left are basically bridal showers and smaller daytime events. I don't think I have anything that would be scheduled after 10:00 PM at night. Most of them are luncheons from 12 to 4:00.
John, have most of these events or parties been scheduled already? And if so, how many are we talking about?
So I have seven remaining parties that have not postponed to the following year. They are trying to hold out to still have their event, but they understand that I cannot hold it inside for more than 25 guests. That is the only reason I'm trying to petition for this permit so that these people don't have to cancel and don't, or some of them can't cancel or won't be able to postpone till next year. And so I'm just trying to do what I can to honor my clients and see if I can still provide the service. If I can't provide the service, you know, because, you know, the group is too large, then they know that and they take the deposit and move it to a new date in the future. So I understand that some of these people may still decide to cancel their event. Even if I'm granted permission, they still may have more people than I'm going to be able to be allowed on the patio. So there's a lot of still moving parts, but I thought I'd ask the permission first to see what that would look like so that I can give an intelligent answer to my clients who are already under contract. Again, it is only seven remaining jobs through September and October.
Thank you.
So this is tables and chairs, essentially?
Correct. The banquet tables and chairs.
And do you plan to remove them in between events or leave them set up?
Oh, they would be removed. They would be put back into the function hall.
And I'm looking at the plot plan. Doesn't, the one that shows the Sherwick Ave, which is shown as 20 feet wide and then the parking lot is 37.29 feet wide along the seawall, would you include that entire length or some percentage of that length?
I would do the entire length from the building all the way over, which is the entire seawall space. I think the total length is about 57 feet, 55 feet.
Yep. And again, I didn't get a chance to get down there and look at it, but I think you said earlier that cars would still be able to make the turn from Range Road into the parking lot?
That is correct. There used to be cars that would park along the seawall and it never interfered with cars turning up into Range Road. And neither does the paved area that we currently have, does not interfere with cars turning into Range Road.
Thank you.
John, thanks for the presentation. You know, in these times, I'm just trying to be consistent and, you know, help out all of the businesses in town as much as we can, provided that, you know, we don't cause any adverse effects around the community. You know, we've helped out the Ocean View and the Tides and others and I'm certainly willing to try to, you know, vote in the affirmative for you. And let's, you know, hope that it goes well. So if there's any, no further discussion on this, I'll take a vote.
Yeah, I've got one more question if I could. And John, from a safety point of view, from the ground up, how tall is that seawall?
The seawall is, in some spaces, it's taller than others. I think in the tallest space, it's about 36. And on the lower spaces on either end, I believe I measured them around 29 to 30. And that's because the sloping comes down to accommodate all of the water from rain and everything to the drain hole that is in the middle of the seawall space. So it is not a flat surface.
No, what I'm asking is, I'm not asking the height of the seawall itself, but from the ground level where you'll have your folks being entertained. Where the seating, from that ground level, how high up does that go? Two feet, three feet, five feet?
I don't think I'm understanding the question.
How tall is the wall protecting people from?
Oh, the wall, okay, the wall protecting the people are planters. So from the parking lot to the paved area, I will put, I have planters that are along there with spaces in between about 30 inches. But the planters themselves are 24 inches tall and then there are plants in them that make it about 36 inches tall. Somewhat of privacy, but still very open and airy to the paved area.
And those are placed along the seawall?
They're placed along, no, they're placed along, running parallel to the seawall, creating almost like a courtyard effect so that the patrons would be protected, obviously, if a car, obviously could see that there's planters in front of them when they're coming down the driveway and then going to turn right up onto Range Road. So it's creating a barrier.
Opposite of that, John, the seawall itself, if you're standing in the parking lot looking at the water, how tall?
The seawall is about 36 inches tall in one spot, but it's a little less on either end because of the sloping of the parking lot.
Does that answer your question, selectman? Canty?
Yes, it does, but I'm just looking at it from a safety point of view because, you know, folks are going to be sitting along the seawall there and a wrong or sudden move could be a problem.
Jean, I think that's a good point. And, you know, I think, John, we're probably supportive. We want to make sure that this is code compliant. There is a pretty far drop off that seawall. It's about 15 to 20 feet. So you may need a little bit more protection on there, but maybe the Philly inspector could take a look at that and we can condition this vote on that.
Okay. Do you have a recommendation on how high would be satisfactory?
Whatever the code requires.
Okay.
I don't know what it is, but it may be compliant now.
The seawall area that's built now is what we've been working with for this amount of time and it's never been an issue before. I haven't decreased the height.
Right. But I think what selectman Canty is saying is that now we have people out there eating and drinking and it could be a little bit more dangerous.
Okay.
John, it's not meant to be an impediment. It's just to ensure an additional safety measure.
No, I understand. And like I said, maybe I could do something to raise the height of it with additional planters on top of the seawall or something, creating that sense of a barrier and not allowing people to maybe hop up and sit on top of the wall. That would still be aesthetically pleasing to people who are attending an event and it would give maybe that added height that you're looking for. So it's something certainly, you know, we will have to consider.
Yeah, something to think about.
Okay. Okay.
If we're going to make a condition, we've got to change the motion. We've got to withdraw this motion and make a new one conditioned upon the building inspector's approval. And I can read that. First of all, Mark, if you want to put that condition on it, you've got to withdraw that motion and make a new motion.
Okay, withdraw the original motion?
Yeah, there's got to be a motion, withdraw the motion, so to speak.
Okay. Do I have a second to withdraw the motion?
I second that.
Then seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Josh Andrew, my.
And Jean, Canty, I.
Mark Cullen, an eye. Okay, can you give us a new motion?
Yeah, yeah, I certainly can. Give me a second. I've got a couple of some things together here. Just take two seconds, just a moment here. Okay. All right, here it is. So here's the new motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Section 4 of Governor Baker's Executive Order Number 35 and conditioned upon the building inspector's approval of the seawall height, approve the application submitted by the Bayside Function Room to temporarily expand their licensed premises as approved in their original liquor license application. Done.
As read. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Then seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote?
Josh Andrew, my.
Jean, Canty, I.
Mark Cullen, an eye. Okay, the second motion now, Dan, is?
It's basically the same thing, other than we're exchanging the liquor license for the common vic license. So the language will be very, very similar and it'll go like this. We'll use the same condition. Here's the motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Section 4 of Governor Baker's Executive Order Number 35 and conditioned upon the building inspector's approval of the seawall height, approve the application submitted by the Bayside Function Room to temporarily expand their licensed premises as approved in the original common victor application.
As read. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Then seconded. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing, hearing none. A roll call vote?
Josh Andrew, my.
Jean, Canty, I.
Mark Cullen, an eye. Good luck, John.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Appreciate it.
Byrne, if you can give me a copy of your deed, that would be very helpful moving forward.
I will work on that, yes. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to Section 4 of our agenda, ongoing business. Vote to approve deficit spending budget for the month of August, FY '21. You have a motion for that? Jean?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the deficit spending budget for the month of August fiscal year '21.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. So this is month number?
Yes. So this is month number two of our deficit spending plans until we get to town meeting. So every month we're required to put together a deficit spending plan that needs to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, certified by the clerk and submitted to the Department of Revenue. That is not less than 1/12 of the amount of our total budget of our total annual budget from last year and is based on spending trends of each department per month. It's deficit spending, so whatever we submit to DOR for our expenses in these accounts, we cannot exceed. And then once town meeting occurs and the full budget is voted on, whatever was spent in these first three months is deducted from that approved amount. So briefly, you'll see some changes in August compared to July. Number one, there's more payroll weeks, so salary line items are increased a little bit compared to August. Not that any salary rates have changed, but just simply because there's more payroll weeks in the month. School budget or school spending sees a significant increase as we're preparing for bringing, you know, bringing teachers back and getting ready for September school, which I'm sure will be on the next Board of Selectmen agenda, having a discussion about that. Or if anyone's interested, please follow along with the school committee meetings that are also on Zoom. And then actually a pretty big reduction in spending on, you know, assessments or health insurance or things of that nature that took place or debt service payments take place in the month of July that are not taking place in August. So, you know, for the month of July, our total general fund and enterprise fund expenditure plan was $2,322,337. And for the month of August, it is $1,525,951. So less, less than the month of July, but still more than 1/12.
Very good, Tony. One question. Have we closed out FY '20 yet?
Close. It were, it doesn't look like we are dealing with a deficit in closing out the year. However, we did end up with about $200,000 less in real estate revenue that didn't come in. We're a little bit lower than expected on water and sewer on those bills. And some other revenues, local receipts, came in lower than we had anticipated. We also stopped a significant amount of spending with COVID and a lot of our expenses got charged to the COVID account. You know, luckily, we budget conservatively, we estimate conservatively on our revenues and we didn't have to spend too much more. So I'll get the final numbers as to exactly how we ended the year in the coming weeks for you. But the good news is we didn't, we were able to, because we tightened up our spending in the last couple of months, we avoided ending the year in deficit.
Great. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing, hearing none, roll call vote?
Josh Andrew my.
Jean Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Continuing on Ongoing Business 4B, deserving East Point continuing discussion. During our last meeting, the Board of Selectmen approved what we refer to as our second statement on East Point. At the time, there was a some questions, I believe from Karen Calnan, that we talked about a little. We agreed that the Board of Selectmen would respond in entirety of their questions and post them on our website for public review. I've completed my response. I know that Josh and Jean may be still working on theirs. Hopefully they'll finish it up today or tomorrow. Because, you know, we had some issues with making sure we didn't violate the open meeting law. It's been difficult for us to sort of, not difficult, impossible for us to sit down together and try to meld all of our responses into one, one response. So what I've suggested we do in, in, in in respect to the open meeting law is I've submitted my responses to Karen's questions. If Josh and Jean, you get yours to Tony, we could put that, we could put our responses, our collective responses online, either Thursday, tomorrow, or at the latest Friday. And then we could revisit this at our next meeting.
That's fine with me.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, great. All right, so.
Mark?
Yeah.
Oh, this is.
Okay, echo in Karen. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mark, I couldn't hear you right too well, right at the end. So the plan is that each of you will
Yeah. Have our individual responses to the question. I mean, I would, originally I was thinking that we would get together as a, as three members of the board and have a collective response, but because we can't meet unless we're in public session, we're unable to do that. So I think the best thing I can do now is to have each of our responses posted with your questions and have that done by tomorrow, Friday, at the very latest.
Okay. So it should be up, or three of them individually should be up by Thursday, Friday on the website.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Is someone asking a question, Tony? Okay. Let's move on to the Department of Public Works Collective Bargaining Agreement.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Manhattan Department of, oh, that's Josh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Keep reading.
To approve the Manhattan Department of Public Works Union Memorandum of Agreement for the three fiscal years of 2021 through 2023 and the one fiscal year of 2020.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Tony, you want to explain this for us?
Yes, yes. So this is the third slash fourth and final of the, of all the unions, less than the teachers, which already have an ongoing agreement, that were in need of being negotiated. And I'm very happy, I think that the Public Works and clerical union are happy with what we have here. So similar to the previous contracts that you've already approved for fire and police, this is a one-year, 0% for the last year that we just finished. And then a three-year, 2, 3, 3%. And then with the clerical union who actually got a 2% last year, they're going to go 2, 2, 2, starting July. So collectively, 3% over the four years, but for the DPW union. So a couple of other little changes in there as well that we negotiated regarding license stipends and things like that. But overall, happy to have this completed and I think they are too. And there, and again, you know, the bottom line is all three or four unions are, have kind of taken, taken a hit over the last couple of years to help the community get through this process. And then, you know, we're kind of helping them out in the later years. So it's a, it's a, it's a solid negotiation of give and take on both parts.
So, yeah, I'd like, just like to thank the, the unions and you, Tony, for working through this. I know it's not easy always and I'm pleased that we're able to satisfy our employees. You know, there's a lot of, it's not just doing the job. There's a lot of local knowledge involved. We certainly appreciate it and and so thanks for getting that done.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job, Tony. Now you've got three years off from doing this again, so that's, that's good. A good job. And again, thanks to, as Josh, thanks to all the union members in, in working together collectively and getting this done. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing, hearing none, roll call vote?
Josh Andrew my.
Jean Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Okay, Town Administrators Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First on my report is Flash Road Basketball and Tennis Court. So we got, town meeting approved $160,000 of community preservation money for the the project to basically completely redo the basketball and tennis courts at Flash Road Park. This would be, the idea here is to do a total reconstruction. That court, those courts are about 30 something years old and haven't had, worked under them, I think, quite some time. And really, the drainage, the, a lot of the cost that we underestimated was, is due to subgrade improvements to help with drainage, which ultimately will improve the, the, the life of the courts over, over time. But we did put the bid out, we got it designed and we put it out for construction. And the received bids came in higher than our current funding amount. So again, we approved $160,000 and we got two bids that came in, one for $238,000 and the other for $269,000. They're pretty similar and we ran these by our design engineer and he believes that they're strong competitive bids, even though they're higher than what we currently have funding. So I wanted to give that update because we've been, you know, hope, we were hoping to break ground in August or September and get these, get this project started before the end of the season. But now we got to go back to the drawing board and try and find some additional funding to help, because we can't award the contract without all the funding. You know, the positive side of it is we're making more progress and we understand, we have a better understanding of how much it's going to cost to do the job. But on the, on the, on the negative side of it is we got more work to do.
Tony, were you able to talk to, I think about asking the roll bidder to create holders bid until we went through town meeting and appropriated the additional funds through community preservation? Maybe they could start it in the spring if they could hold their bid?
Um, I can do that. I can do that.
As an option. At least.
Yeah.
And Tony?
Yeah.
Just to add to that, this year, I don't know if everyone knows, but our kindergarten class coming in in September is 30 people, 30 little kids. So I'm just saying, you know, yep, reach this facility with all these little youngsters coming up would be perfect timing.
Definitely. And then also, we also got a petition with a, with a significant amount of signatures on it from folks of all ages asking if we would include pickleball in the tennis courts. So that was part of the design too. So it would, it would, it would hit all age groups.
Is going out to bid a second time, is that an option or a reasonable thing to do?
I think it is when you have like such a wide range of bids and you think something was off with the, with the, with the bid documents that went out. In this scenario, I think this is probably a legitimate range. You know, we could shave some of these costs by doing, you know, just a overlay of the existing subgrade, but as you can see down there, the, because of the drainage, it's, it, there's a lot of cracking in the, in the, in the pavement. So we think the way to do it, the right way to do it would be to really improve the subgrade there so that it's long lasting.
Definitely.
Tony, Tony, if you could get him to hold the bid or them to hold the bid, go to town meeting, hopefully in September, if that's still on, on course. And get the additional monies. You still have October, November that you can lay that, that asphalt down. In fact, October would be a perfect time.
Yeah, I'm also, I'm exploring, you know, grants or state aid as well. Because, you know, we're still in the development phases of the budget for September and for the upcoming year. And I don't know if finding an additional 100 grand or a little bit less than that to make the difference up is, is doable with the current financial situation of, you know, but we're going to, I'll definitely ask them to hold it and we're going to try and get as creative as possible to, to keep the momentum on this project going.
Great.
The next on my list is the upcoming water main work. So before I get into the, there's a couple of water main issues happening. So obviously, folks are aware, I think, aware that we had a water pressure issue throughout the community yesterday, I believe. And that was caused by a leak on the causeway in the, in the parking lot on the causeway. And when exploring where that leak occurred, we lost pressure to, you know, that's on the main that comes into the town. So we lost pressure to the entire community. There is a redundant line there, so we were able to restore pressure slowly and carefully. So that's been fixed, but we do have a repair that is, an emergency repair that is going to take place over the next day or two on the 14-inch main on the causeway. Separately, what I have listed in this, in, in my report has to do with the planned or scheduled water main upgrades on Walton Road, Furbush Road, Mills Terrace and Howe Road. So these are all projects that were funded through, or funded by the 0% interest MWRA loans that have been approved by town meeting over the past couple of years. And these are part of the capital plan. This work is set to begin in mid to late August and will likely take three to four weeks. And we will make sure that residents on those respective roads are, are properly noticed. But it includes replacing a two-inch water main along Furbush Road with a new eight-inch main. The section of two-inch main that runs down Walton Road will also be replaced and connect to the existing eight-inch main on 40 Steps Lane, making that a continuous loop. We'll also be adding new fire hydrants in the area. And then on Howe Road, the six-inch main is going to be replaced with an eight-inch main as well as on Mills Terrace. And we've had water pressure issues in both those areas for quite some time. And by upgrading these two lines and these systems, it'll help with both of those. So I'm very excited to get that work going and get that completed.
Is it one contractor for all that? Is it, uh, one contractor for all that work?
Yes, JP Cardillo and Sonata Wakefield.
Okay. Great. All right. Sounds good.
Um, next on my list is Castle Road and Fox Hill Road Flood Mitigation Plan. So, um, we've had, uh, quite a few emails and calls recently, uh, from the Lowlands area, uh, of moving Castle Road and Fox Hill Road from the residents of that neighborhood, seeking an update, um, as to how we are approaching this situation. And as you know, and I don't know if other folks on the note, on the, on the call know, there is a, um, citizen petition warrant article at town meeting this, uh, for this town meeting, um, on this subject. Um, but we've had a lot of, uh, communication, I think, with, with folks down there. Um, but I think there's more to do and I think that, um, scheduling some type of follow-up communication with myself and either one member of the board or, um, and Zach and the folks down in that neighborhood is, 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 uh, is necessary because it's a, it's a very complex issue. Um, but I did want to kind of recap, I guess, some of the work that we've done or since I've been here, some of the work that's been done. Um, there was $175,000 appropriated or approved by town meeting in 2018. And that was, um, there was quite a few things in the, in the, um, in the motion there that that could be spent on. But the primary goal was for it to be used towards, um, flood improvement issues in the Lowlands area. Um, we initially started spending that money on looking at the current, um, kind of a rudimentary survey of the current heights, um, and uh, direction of the existing stormwater pipes and catch basins. Um, and also to explore the issue with the 18 inch outfall pipe from Castle Road that goes, um, through the first property on the right side of Castle Road there out to Doggy Beach or Black Rock Beach. Um, we got a, we gained a lot of information from that, from that study, from that survey. We understand, um, you know, which direction the water should be heading in. Uh, what's missing, I think, from that study is a full hydrology study would actually tell us, you know, the conditions of the pipes, how free flowing they are, where water actually would go. Uh, right now what we have is, like I said, um, the heights of the pipes and the widths of the pipes, the size of the pipes and what direction we believe that the water should be flowing from catch basin to catch basin in that area. Um, we then focused on the outfall pipe where most of the system is designed to flow to. Um, that outfall pipe has been, um, hasn't been operating for maybe 30, maybe 15 to 30 years. It's unknown really how long it hasn't been working. Um, and so we started off by, um, jetting the pipe, cleaning it out and seeing how far we could get to the other end and, um, we didn't really make it all the way through. Then we went onto the beach and started digging in the area where we believe the pipe would show itself. We couldn't find it there. Then we camered the pipe and we got to about 20 feet from the seawall and we couldn't go much further. Then we procured, um, a company to come out and actually dig, uh, on the, on the easement on the land side of the seawall to find out what was going on with the pipe. And about 13 feet down was the old pipe and it didn't go anywhere. It was, it was basically, it looks like, it looked like it was cleanly cut. Um, again, we don't know how long ago that happened. Um, we don't know if it's the current homeowner, the previous homeowner, the Army Corps, whoever did the job of, of building that revetment and seawall. Um, but what we did know was that at that moment, um, that 18 inch pipe, which needed some repairs of itself, didn't get, reach the beach and wasn't working and to, um, the permitting and the engineering would take a long time and the permit, take a lot, a lot of money and a lot of time, um, to the point where, um, at that moment, it was, we had to close the hole and rethink how we were going to approach the situation. Uh, so we were also getting close to the winter, winter at that, at that time. That was about the end of the summer and the fall. I remember it being extremely windy and cold when we were opening that hole. And we didn't want to waste any time or we weren't sure which way we were going to go. So we wanted to, um, at a minimum purchase, uh, portable pumps so that if we were, if we found ourselves in a flood-like situation that winter, we'd be prepared for it. So we ordered two, um, portable, uh, diesel pumps with eight inch hose. Um, and we used some of the money from the 175 for that. And we used, uh, we got some FEMA reimbursed as well for, for some of that as well. So that total, that brings us to, that brings us to a balance of, of 22.9. So almost $23,000 is left in that $175,000 after doing the preliminary study on the existing storm drains, doing the exploration of that outfall pipe and then purchase of those pumps. Um, we still have that money right there. We're standing now. Um, so we looked into the, we, we've looked into that situation even further and we have submitted a conceptual plan for a hazard mitigation grant that would help, um, create a new outfall. Based on engineers', uh, guidance or recommendation, the 18 inch pipe that we have there, um, wouldn't produce, it's a gravity fed pipe and it wouldn't produce enough relief to keep up with a flood-like situation. And we really would need a, a larger system to make a significant impact. Um, either way, it takes some pretty extensive permitting in order to do so. Uh, so we've submitted that, it was wait, that grant application re-listed. It's not, it wasn't approved, it wasn't denied, but simply it was waitlisted. Um, we've also looked at, um, we've, we've, uh, gotten an MVP grant, uh, to explore improving the resiliency of the short beach dune. Um, and we're probably in the next week or two should be, um, receiving some uh, conceptual design on those improvements to help with, uh, that, that's a flood prevention, um, activity. And we should be able to release that information for public consumption in the coming weeks. Um, and we've also, uh, removed, last year we put, uh, $50,000 towards removing uh, material from the compo site, which is a, um, flood capacity issue that we have. You know, we, the more material we have down there, the less storage for floodwater do we have in the area. So we're also pursuing a goal of cleaning that area up as well. We also had planned, um, uh, mosquito, um, mosquito control had for the second year in a row, wasn't able to come out and do some much needed, uh, ditch dredging maintenance work because the ground never froze. Um, so we're still working with them to try and figure out how we can make sure, um, that that work can get done. And we've dug up some of the old plans from, um, 2011. So 2011 was the last time that the ditch system was, um, cleaned out. A lot of material was removed and provided pitch towards Bear Pond, uh, where we have our most capacity and we have our, our, uh, largest gravity and, um, permanent pumps. Um, but that requires annual maintenance and it hasn't been done in, in, you know, about 10 years. So, um, you know, over the last two years, uh, there, there's a lot that has happened over the last couple of years to head us in the right direction. There's still a lot of work to do. Um, and I know that there's a lot of questions from the neighborhood too about a lot of the things I just said. So, um, I think I'll probably stop there and, and open up for questions from the selectmen.
Yeah. Yeah. Before we open it up too, I know there's a lot of people in the neighborhood that want to, that want to have something to say and I'll open it up to them in a, in a second. I know Josh, I'm, I'm sort of, I know a lot about this issue down here from my past experience with the town. But I know that you've been, um, working with Tony and, and Zach and some of the engineers and you have some, um, um, opinions about, um, things. And so I, I'll let you go first and now chime in and Gene, um, then we'll open it up to the, um, the public.
Uh, well, I guess I wouldn't call this an opinion per se, but, um, um, I, I, you know, it's an important topic. Um, I, I understand, um, the frustration of the, of the neighborhood. I used to live down there too, experienced flooding. Um, and, um, I'm committed to, uh, making something happen there. Um, that's why I called a meeting with, uh, Tony and Zach, uh, back in June. And we sat down for a couple of hours and really went through all the details that we had available to us. That was not intended to be a, uh, the all and end all. I don't, I don't think I even, uh, the other members of the board, uh, knew about that meeting, but, but, um, um, you know, I'm committed to, to following through till we have a solution. Um, you know, as it is now, uh, as Tony mentioned, our collective interpretation of that system is the, the pitches of all that drainage system is guided towards that defunct 18 inch pipe. Um, and that obviously doesn't go anywhere. And so right now, the only, literally the only exit from that area is the ditch, which is, I guess I would call non-functional. So, um, uh, I know Tony's, uh, committed to, uh, addressing this problem and I certainly am, and, uh, I want the neighbors to know that as well.
Good. Here's what I suggest, um, Tony and Gene, I'll hear you in a second. But, um, I think we all agree that we're talking primarily about mitigation here. Um, when the, when the ocean comes over, it comes over and the area is going to get flooded. The question is how quickly, how quickly can we recover, uh, after that flood event takes place? Um, prevention is probably, Tony mentioned a little bit about some work on the dune that may provide prevention a little, uh, some work at the compost area. That will all help, but primarily we're looking at a mitigation plan. I know, um, you know, hurricane season is coming upon us and we should have something in place, either, even if it's just a short-term plan. Um, um, while we're working on a permanent solution. Um, but some sort of short-term plan. And it could be number one, I think we have to complete the, the H and A, or the hydrology hydraulic analysis there. Um, and I agree with what you all have discovered so far that everything seems to be going to that manhole. Um, and the intersection of Castle and Fox Hill Road, and from there it goes nowhere. Um, I also agree that, that the ditch that goes through, um, Christian Jard and I think between your parents, yeah, Tony, and, and the other property is non-functional. Um, and I mean, I think part of the short-term plan is the utilization of those pumps somehow. Uh, but I think we need to get a study. We need to figure out what a short-term plan is. What are we going to do this fall when hurricane season comes? Um, to, to mitigate the issues, uh, while we're working on a longer, uh, long-term solution. And hopefully we can put that in place. Now, I do also agree with you that what, the, the neighborhood has to, deserves to be more involved in this. And I think we need to either set up some Zoom meetings specifically for this and invite our engineers in to go over the plan and get some comments and input from the neighbors as we move forward. But I think we need to get something in place between now and, in the fall. Gene, you don't have any comments? You used to live down there.
Yes, yes, I did. And I, and I've had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to go down there and walk it. And I was talking with Tony today about it and I'm just listening to what you're talking about here. And I, I can honestly say in discussions with everyone so far, Zach included, um, you guys blew all over this. This is not being closed out. It's not being, uh, discussed in, in, in any other manner other than urgency. And, and I think that that's great. I don't, I don't really need to reinvent the wheel, but what I saw and what you guys are saying is clearly in line.
Tony, we guys want to open it up at all?
Yeah. Comment I just wanted to make, Mark, uh, before we move off, before we open it up. Um, I, I don't want to, uh, overlook the, the portable pumps. Um, you mentioned that it's really a mitigation, um, issue that the ocean's going to come and, and what we're really aiming for is how fast can we empty it out? Those pumps are 4500 GPM each, so 9,000 GPM combined. That works out to over a million gallons, uh, in two, in two hours. So, um, they are high-capacity pumps and will be.
Oh, it will drain that area quickly.
Yeah. Uh, very quick. I don't want to overlook the significance of having those pumps available. Um, Zach has, uh, has his guys checked out on those. They, they they know how to operate them, they've tested them out and, uh.
I think what, yeah, I, I agree 100%. Uh, they're much more efficient than the pumps you have down in Bear Pond, which are probably half the capacity that those two pumps have. Um, the question will be, if you're going to use those pumps, you're going to have to be able to have a suction venue. You have to be able to, where are you going to put your suction holes and where are you going to put the discharge holes? Uh, and you don't want to be running around figuring that out during the storm event. Um, that should be in place. Um, I don't know the condition of that manhole, whether or not you could, whether everything is draining into it. We've got to make sure that, that all the, all of the hydrology and the hydraulics aren't going to that manhole. If we need to clean it out right away, we should be doing that so that in the fall, if we start using that manhole to, um, to discharge out of, we're able to do that. Um, you know, eventually, I mean, one of the issues that people were talking about putting, um, and I don't want to get into the weeds on this at all, but, um, you know, submersible pumps in there like we have at Lowlands. One of the issues you're going to have with that is for each of those pumps, uh, those submersible eight inch or 10 inch pumps that you put in there, you need to put a vault in the ground and the vault is like 10 by 10. Um, so you would take out pretty much all of Castle Road putting those vaults in there. And you've got a lot of gas, infrastructure, water, sewer, everything else in there. So that's going to have to be looked at. Um, but I, I think we all agree that I, we need to figure out a plan on how we, how we, um, mobilize those pumps, um, for this fall.
Well, you know, just again, I guess we don't want to engineer it here, but, um, that's essentially the intent of the stone line stump, uh, alongside, uh, Ward Road there. That's, that's the low point and that's where, um, the pipe that, from Christian Howard's backyard heads over to, so that is the, let's say, the planned suction point.
Okay, okay.
There's two, there's two actually. That, that one that Josh mentioned, and I think that's kind of like your secondary suction point. Uh, the first is actually the manhole. The first is actually the manhole right on Castle Road at that 18-inch outfall pipe. The road's higher, right? So if the Lowlands, you know, if Ward Road and Fox Hill Road are flooded and you can't access the entrance of the parking lot, you can typically access that other chain because it's up higher. So you start pumping there and then you can move down towards, down towards the parking lot. But yeah, that area as well has already seen some improvement to help with access.
Crazy thought. What if you had some sort of a man-made compensatory storage area where the water would drain into and then you could pump from that? I think maybe something along the lines of the vaults.
Yeah, we thought about some type of like capacity, like some type of hole-in-pond of some sort, like in the area. Parking lot, but it's all protected area. It's all Lowland. You know, protected, the permitting of something like that is extensive. It's not impossible, but it's extensive. So, but we did think of something in a similar nature of that. Gene?
For those of, for those in the neighborhood that saw the minutes from our meeting, Tony and Zach, there's a lot that's not reflected in there. You know, a lot of the, what we'd call dead ends, you know, and we didn't, I didn't write all that stuff down. But I think the community meeting might be the best place to discuss some of these details.
I know Christine's looking to address you three. Are you, can we open it to Christine? All right, Christine, the mic is yours.
Great. Thank you so much for putting us on the agenda and for addressing this issue. I do appreciate your urgency in dealing with this. Thinking about what John said earlier, crisis fatigue. I think we have that in not just the Lowlands neighborhood. You know, every time there is a storm and we have a significant devastating episode, we all react and then we kind of all get relaxed about it. But as someone noted in here, we're all ready in hurricane season. I do want to point out a few things. I like the idea of having a short-term plan to deal with this immediately. And since everything pitches to Castle Road, I think by the time water gets to Ward Road, we are in over our heads. So we need to have a way to pump out sooner. The pumps need to be in place before a storm hits and we need to start pumping as soon as it hits out to Lynn Harbor from Castle Road. By the time it hits Ward Road, the entire Lowlands is underwater. And I do want to point out that this is not a neighborhood issue. This is a town-wide issue. When Nahant is cut off because Castle Road and the Haunt Road close due to flooding, there is no emergency assistance, there's no medical assistance. And when the critical infrastructure, the electric substation or the sewer flood and we're knocked out of business, there will be no pumping. There may be no toilet flushing for all of Nahant. So this is not just a neighborhood issue. This is a town-wide issue. And I really would love to see the town get behind it and support the article. I did hear earlier, you know, I love basketball and I love recreation. I work with children and I'm so proud that we're going to do something for the basketball court. But what came up with that was drainage and you're looking to find $100,000 to find drainage for a basketball court, which certainly is important. But we're looking at a town-wide safety, public safety issue and a neighborhood health issue that also deserves that kind of attention to find the funding to correct this problem, which, you know, you've said tonight, it's non-functional. The ditches are non-functional. The drainage system is non-functional. It hasn't been maintained since 2011. And we've had our most recent devastating flooding in 2018. So we had a great couple of, two years where we were, one year, I guess, two years where we were flood-free. And I'm hoping we will continue in that path. But I appreciate your urgency. I appreciate your support. I would love to have a meeting with all of you, with the engineers. I worked with the MVP to get things going on the beach to help prevent flooding. I think it's important to get that compost area emptied out. We have $50,000 fiscal year 2020, 21 as well, I would think, to start emptying that because that was a high point for us during the 2018 flooding. It was an island and we were all flooded. So anything we can do, and Zach and Tony did an outstanding job last year clearing that space. So we really appreciate it, not only us, but the neighbors on Spring Road who also flood when it goes around the compost area. So thank you. I'm available. Hit me up. We'll meet.
Well, thank you, Christine. Well said. I agree completely with everything you said. It is a town-wide issue and we should address it as a town-wide issue. Unfortunately, people in the neighborhood are getting impacted most severely, but it is a town-wide issue and hopefully we can improve the problem.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. Thank you, Josh, Tony, Gene. Appreciate it.
You know, I'll just say that the, where we are today is a lot due to hard work, Christine, and the other folks in that neighborhood. Christine, you know, does volunteer her time on the MVP committee and donates a lot of her time to it, which looks at these issues all over town. And, you know, the only reason we have these pumps right now is because of the $175,000 that I know you pushed for in 2018 as well. So, you know, you deserve more credit than, than a lot of us do for the work that you're doing over there. And yeah, we'll continue the conversation and hope to have something in place before the, before winter, at least a short-term plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Yeah, one more item, Tony.
Yes, status report on vacant boards and committees. So I know that we've had, I know there's a lot of folks out there that are, have been voicing their desire to participate on committees and vacancies and things of that nature. There's, you know, when I was first interviewing for this position and going through the process of becoming town administrator, one thing that was really highlighted during that process was questions about how I would improve the process and improvements in transparency and of opportunity to volunteer in the community. And quite frankly, it's fallen through the cracks over the last couple of years, revamping that process and kind of getting a handle on where vacant seats lie and, you know, where existing committee members, you know, what terms they're on, what year of their term they are on, do they need to be reappointed? Things like that has been, it's taken time and, but I did want to, I understand that, you know, I know, I know you, the Board of Selectmen, have been contacted by a number of people about reaching out and saying they're willing, you know, that they want to, they want to volunteer and get involved. And we do have all of those names listed. The goal has been to, first of all, understand exactly where vacant seats lie. Then, you know, announce a collective, some type of, some type of announcement that would show all open seats. And whenever there is an open seat after that point, you know, how we're going to advertise that. And then how people can apply for it. And we talked about having a committee fair where all committee chair people would be here in the town hall and people interested in volunteering could come and communicate with them about what the mission is of their respective committees and what the demand is as far as how long are, how often do they meet? You know, is delayed due to other, you know, COVID-type reasons. Also talked about creating a tab on the website that says get involved, where people could fill out a questionnaire about, you know, what types of committees or interests they have and availability they have. And then when a seat does open on those committees, we could reach out to them and say a seat's been opened. Are you still? And then really having kind of like an application process. You know, there's a balance of not, you know, you don't want to make it too much of a burden. It is a volunteer position and you want to take advantage of people's willingness to donate their time as soon as they, as soon as they voice that willingness. But some, like I said, some of the, some of the concerns that were kind of brought to my attention early on were that it wasn't really vastly publicized to the community when seats were available. So some people that may want to get involved didn't know that seats were available and then missed the opportunity to take advantage of those. And then throughout this process, there's been a couple scenarios where it was extremely important for certain seats to be appointed so that forums could be met and, you know, activities of those committees continue. So we are, you know, we're still in the, in the process of doing all that. Actually have a pretty lengthy email drafted, not complete quite yet, to all committee chairs, explaining where we are in that process and explaining to them new steps as far as how to have committee meetings during COVID because we've experienced a lot of technical issues with Zoom. And we have a new clerk as well. So bringing the town clerk into, into the, into the conversation because, you know, she's the keeper of records and appointments and swearing people in and ethics training and open meeting law training and that sort of thing. So it's an ongoing process. We are, you know, we're very eager to get people appointed and hope to make, you know, significant progress on that soon.
Thank you, Tony. And, you know, I do appreciate you taking a comprehensive look at the whole process. And it's probably something that needs to be done. I get a little concerned because we have known for over a year, some openings that have been available. And I know that there's been a number of people who have submitted their, their desire to fill a seat. But I just, you know, I don't know if we need to delay the appointment of some that we've, we've known for, for over a year, that we have candidates willing to go into the position while we're trying to figure out the whole picture. I think we can do both. And I wouldn't, I know that there's, I get, I've gotten calls by several committee chairs who get a little frustrated because they can't get a quorum and they're having difficulties with that. So I would just encourage you to take a look at some of the openings right, that we have, that we know we have, some of the candidates who have applied. And let's try to get them done while you are putting a comprehensive vote together. Josh, you have any comments?
Yeah, just, just supporting the same sentiment, you know, definitely laud the notion of sort of perfecting the system. But we've got to fill those vacancies in the meantime, in some cases.
Gene, any comments?
Yeah, it's just, it's incredible during the campaign. The one thing I learned is this town has a wealth of talent, experience, intelligence. It's incredible. And if we can get those people to come in and fill in some of those positions, it's going to make everybody's job that much easier.
Yeah.
Definitely. I'm admitting, I'm admitting that I need to make it more of a priority and, and get some of these appointments completed. So I hear you and I hear, and I hear, the last thing I want to do is turn people away that are willing to contribute their time. So we'll, we'll do better.
Okay, thanks, Tony. I appreciate it. Okay, we've got Citizens Forum.
There is quite a few. Let me back up here and see if we missed anything from earlier.
And Tony, I know you have a FinCon meeting you have to get to soon, right?
I do. Hopefully there's still meetings. We saw, we caught that. Kay Alice. Earlier on, you had asked, any word on more handicap accessibility at beaches? Are you still on the line?
Yes, she says she's here.
Okay, can you, do you want to, oh, and looks like you, yep, it looks like you're asking more. So then, just for now, you wrote, any movement on handicap, handicap accessible beaches and parking? Thought a grant was given in the spring. I can't give my dad a lifeline to haunt her down to any beach. I also have a loved one who is disabled and wears braces. Also has a hard time getting down. Tudor, a favorite. Ramp railing at the end is the image. Any new ramps and railings planned? So we have, that's part of the MVP, the MVP grant is what you're referring to. And like I said, in the next, I'm meeting with the Applied Coastal, the engineers, in the next two weeks to see their conceptual plan, which then will be broadcast to the public for public forum and response. Part of, it is, that is only talking about Shore Beach at the moment. It doesn't include Tudor. And part of it is improving ADA accessibility near the lifesaving station. So would Wharf Beach be possible? Wharf Beach and Tudor. So those are, those are other areas that we need to look at. And, but they're not, I just want to be clear, it's not included in the MVP grant. But it is, it is something that we should be taking a look at. I also have, see, what else do we have here? Can you, Michelle Capano, can you provide an update on when the annual town meeting will be held? So I think we're going to have this on the agenda next, at the next Board of Selectment meeting. We need a time, date and location to have that vote. We're, we're kind of zeroing in on the last Saturday of September. But location is a difficult one. So we're expecting a high turnout this year and with COVID, we simply can't have that many people in the, in the town hall. So we are looking at an outdoor town meeting. So with an outdoor town meeting, we have to take a look at, you know, where can we hold the amount of people that we're expecting and look at parking and weather and, and, you know, electricity. There's a, there's a ton of logistics involved in it. It's quite the undertaking. So we are in the process of putting those, of getting quotes. We're also, you know, as, as I mentioned earlier, we're being, we're being very cautious about how much we're spending and the upcoming, in the unknowns about our revenues from the state and locally because of COVID impacts. If there's a secondary wave, not only will it, could it add another element of issues regarding the logistics of having that many people, you know, at a town meeting, but it could also have financial impacts. So we're trying to strike this balance of, you know, how do we get everybody the opportunity to attend town meeting in a safe way without having to spend a ton of money in a financial uncertain time. So kind of a complex question and answer there for you, Michelle, but we're, we're hoping to do it at the end of September. And we will, we're hoping to have it on the agenda next, next Board of Select meeting on the 5th. it on the agenda next, next Board of Selectment meeting on the 5th. I don't know the name. It just says Zoom user. If you are, if you are on, on the computer, can you unmute yourself and maybe announce your name and, and address and?
Tony?
Yep.
Hi, it's Candace Cahill. Sorry, I don't know why I lost my participant information. I do happen to know that there are two openings right now for boards. And I'm wondering why this opportunity, you can't make the announcement for those two to let people send their resumes to whomever they need to and at least start commuting, communicating through the BOS meeting what the openings are instead of waiting for a big formal process or a town fair or anything else?
Yeah, well, I explained that and we're going to work to improve on that process. And we're hoping to, hoping to make some appointments in the coming weeks and, or days, actually. But yeah, certainly have an ongoing, I have an ongoing spreadsheet of information. Some chair, some committees are better at providing information about open seats than others. And especially during COVID, it's been somewhat tough to, to get information. But the planning board is, planning board and assessor are elected and those fall under the section 313 of the charter. And we talked about that at the beginning of the meeting. So we put that out to the public that those seats are available and people were advised to provide.
I am for John Kulan. I have a question.
Oh, you have a question for John Kulan?
Let's finish this.
Yeah.
Let's finish this one first. Tony, go ahead.
Yeah, so planning board and assessor positions, applications were received up until Monday. And it's on the agenda for the 5th, a joint meeting with the planning board and the Board of Assessors to vote to appoint those positions.
And the ZBA?
Those are.
Just so you know, Tony, I'm not interested in them, as you know. I just think that people should know they're available.
I do too. And that's part of the reason, you know, like I said, you know, seats on these boards come up once in a while. And appointing them immediately and not giving the opportunity for the entire town to know that they're available is one of the things that was raised to me as a, as an improvement to the process. So obviously it's been long enough. And as I said, we're going to do a better job of getting those appointed in a timely fashion.
And Candace, I'll point out the ZBA doesn't have a current vacancy. Donna Lee will be resigning probably after the next meeting in August. So that's an upcoming, but not current opening.
Right. And I knew she had for a while been wanting to, so I didn't know whether or not it was already being put out there instead of waiting until she's gone. So, all right. Thanks.
Tony, can I just circle back once on Kay Alice on the handicap questions that she had? I know that, I know that you are looking at Short Beach. But I, you know, I agree that, you know, we should try to, over the next year or so, take a closer look at at least Tudor Beach and Waf, Waf Beach, Waf Park Beach. Because, you know, Waf Park Beach is a very important one because a lot of the elderly like that because there's some shade there, it's grass. And if we could get some access, and it's not that high off the ground. So, I mean, I think making access at the, at Waf Park Beach would be a relatively easy thing to do. So I think we, we, you know, over the next month or so, maybe for next year, we could think about trying to get something accessible down there. I'm sure, I'm sorry, I think Zach would have some good ideas on that. I think, I think Tudor Beach is a little bit more challenging for sure, but I think Waf Park Beach is, is pretty doable.
In Tudor, you have a, you have a bigger drop, but you have more space for a ramp.
Right.
Waf Park Beach, you have less of a drop.
Correct.
Space for a ramp. So, yeah, it's just, you know, bringing in an engineer that specializes in ADA accessibility. We also, not beach related, but we just, we just did new ADA accessible curb cuts to the Heritage Trail.
Oh, I saw that. That's great, great improvement.
Can you hear me?
Yep, who's that? Deb Vander Slice, are you unmuted?
I believe so. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make a comment from something you were talking about earlier and that was the boats that grouped together at Forty Steps and other places. And I believe you had said you were going to ask the harbor master to put some guidelines or laws together. But I do want to mention that the state already has them and there is, I'm looking right at it, no beach in your boat right next to someone else and no rafting up, keep your distance on the water. I can send you the latest guidelines if you'd like for phase three.
Yeah, I, you know, I was looking, I have, I have the executive order from July 3rd. Is that what you're looking at?
Um, let me see, I have to go back to the original document.
Yeah, could you just send us all the link? That'd be helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, send it over. Thank you, Deb.
Welcome.
Ken Corangelo, hi, lots going on, but what's the status of Coast Guard housing? Do we have a target date for town voting on something? Ken, I'd have to, I'm sorry, but I got to relay your question to the Coast Guard Housing Committee. I'm not sure. The last update I got, they were doing some, some review on the, on the parcels of land and ownership and transfer between the town and the, and the Army, you know. They're kind of doing some, some research on the history of those transactions. But I know that through COVID, they, you know, the registry of deeds shut down. So it may have caused for some delay. Dan, do you have any update on that?
Yeah, Tony, there were some emails that went through earlier today and yesterday. And you're right on the money. There was an issue regarding not necessarily the purchase or the taking, whatever it was, of that property by the government, but it was the return transaction that created some issues. There's a strip of property along Castle that is in question. And we, that's what the committee had gone out and hired a title examiner to look into that. But that's right when COVID hit and she's been unable to complete that task due to the closing. So that's what's holding things up at the moment.
There is a, there is a warrant article, holding place warrant on the warrant. Right?
Yes, that's right, Josh.
No Capano is asking about the BOS statement number two. Can hard copies be available at town hall and public library for residents who not have access to the internet and have heard of this document and want to review it? Public library is, I think, only open by appointment. Town hall is open Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Monday and Wednesday, 7:30 to 4:00. And then on Friday, 7:30 to 12:30. So yes, we can have hard copies available here in the town hall for sure. I will talk to Sharon, the librarian over at the library, to see if we can have some available over there as well. But I don't know if you're, I don't know if it's, I think that it's only open by appointment right now. Kay Alice says, I really don't think that's a great response. More planning for all beaches. What else can be done? Please think about it more. Many of your elderly pleading for it. Short Beach is packed and not very accessible. I know handicap parking is an issue. Alice, where, maybe we can follow up one-on-one or with one of the selectmen about it offline. But certainly it sounds like something that we want to pursue. We just haven't made much progress on it quite yet. I know it's not a great answer, but we just don't, you know, it's something to continue to talk about. More from that. And then Michelle talks about openings on the FinCom. I actually think, Michelle, those are appointed by the moderator and I believe that he's appointed. He's filled those seats. Joe Mellon, there is no Waf Park Beach, Mark. It's Marjoram Park Beach.
Thank you, Joe.
Or Crystal Beach.
Thank you, Joe. I think most people know it as either Marjoram Park Beach or Waf Park Beach. But you're correct as usual, Joe.
There's more in here about, there's more in here about handicap parking and things of that nature. So we'll just, we should follow up with Alice. If you could send me an email or send an email to Mark, I think the two of us will probably connect with you on that.
Tony, we're talking about, do we have an ADA coordinator still in town or do we look to fill that position?
Um, I, I don't think they're very active, but I think he's appointed. I think there is someone in that seat or in that position.
Okay.
All right, I need to jump over to the FinCom meeting.
Okay, if there's no more comments, I have a motion to adjourn.
Moved it to Board of Selectmen during the meeting?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, vote call, vote please.
Josh Hampermy.
Gene Tancy, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night.